It is Tuesdays, October 21st, 2025, 7:00 PM. I will call the city council meeting to order. Clerk Everett, please call the roll.
Councilman Huckabee?
Here.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman Les Goher?
Here.
Councilman Schultz?
Here.
President Jacob?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Invite everyone, please stand if willing and able. Thank you. Item four, Consent Agenda. The consent agenda outlined below is hereby presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of council president.
I move to approve the consent agendas, listed items 4A through 4F. Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, Public Hearings. Tonight, we have none. Item six, Public Comment for Matters on the Agenda Only. The city council received comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon: name, address, and contact information. Note for those following along on Zoom, if you wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand as the chat box is not monitored. And those on the Zoom link must remain muted unless recognized to speak. Tonight, we don't have anyone that signed up in person, so I will call for a first call on Zoom. Second call for anyone on Zoom. Seeing none, we will move on. Item seven, Petitions, Requests, and Communications. 7A is a presentation from MGT Classification and Compensation Study for the City of Fort Atkinson. Ms. Skaggs? Thank you.
Yep, good evening.
I agree.
Is it working?
Yep.
Okay, great. Clicker? Awesome. All right. Let me just make sure. Oh. There we go. Now I don't know how to get back.
If you scroll the wheel.
Oh, there we go, scrolling. Okay, all right. Okay, good evening. My name's Rachel Skaggs. I am a Director of Human Capital with MGT. It's a pleasure to be here in person. I do a lot of these virtually, so it's really nice to come in person. And I'm going to be talking to you about the Classification and Compensation Study that we did for the city. Just a little bit about myself. Prior to working with MGT, I spent over 10 years in local government management, most recently as the city manager for the city of Princeton, Illinois, which is where I currently reside. And then prior to that, worked in the Chicago suburbs for the Village of Schaumburg and the Village of Montgomery. So the agenda, what I'm going to be going over, I'll talk about the scope of work, what was included in the study. I'll go over the job evaluation, which really led to the classification plan. I'll talk about the market survey, the proposed compensation plan, our recommendations on implementation, along with future administration of the plan, and then any questions as we go through two. I always like to start off with, why do a classification and compensation study? And there's really two key components. First, on the classification side, it creates and supports that internal structure in career progression. It really allows employees in positions to see what that career path looks like and has that internal hierarchy. And then on the compensation side, it supports external market data and competitiveness, making sure that we're developing pay ranges and pay plans based on the market. It also supports union contract negotiations and annual cost of living recommendations as well. I'm going to skip over this because I'm going to get all into the project scope as we go on, so then I won't be repeating myself on that one. So the first part of a study is the job evaluation component. And this is really important because it looks at the positions within the city. So all of the positions were reviewed using the nine job factors that you see listed here to establish internal equity. So looking at education, work experience, decision-making and independent judgment, responsibility for policy development, planning of work, contact with others, work of others, so supervision that's exercised by that position, working conditions, and use of technology or specialized equipment. It's really important to note that all of the analysis is focused on what's required of the position, not the person in the position. So each position is looked at based on these nine job factors. Every employee completed a job analysis questionnaire, which covers those nine job factors that are listed here. And then supervisors were also able to provide comments. We never let supervisors make any changes to what the employees have filled out, but they can provide comments. And then we review all of that alongside the job description and then conduct an interview with at least one employee in each position. And that interview is really important because it allows us to really understand what that position does. You know, every community is a little different. And although the job title might be the same from one community to the next, we want to really make sure we understand the roles and responsibilities of the position in Fort Atkinson. So that's what we do with that employee interview process. From there, each position is given a score. That's how the classification plan is created, based on that internal equity, meaning how positions relate to one another within the city. And so Table 1 within the report shows the classification plan, and every position is within one of those 17 grades. So there's 17 grades, and every position falls within one of those grades. At the same time that we were doing that internal job evaluation, we also started doing the external market comparison. The first step in doing that is establishing a group of comparable communities. So in order to do that, we looked at these seven criteria that are listed: population, total equalized value, property tax levy per capita, basic spending per capita, total shared revenue, per capita debt, and proximity. So we started with communities in all of these counties that are listed on the screen with populations between 6,200 and 26,000. And then from there, we applied these seven criteria. So a community that was closer to matching your population would receive more points. The farther away they are, they're going to receive less points. And same for all seven criteria. Based on that, we established a cutoff of 65 points. So communities that received 65 points or more were the most comparable based on those seven criteria. So there were 30 communities that received 65 or more points, and they're shown on this screen here. So those were determined to be the most comparable. And the bolded ones are the ones that responded to the survey or supplied us with a copy of their compensation plan. So we had a great survey response. As you can see, there's only a couple, three, I think, three that we did not get data for. So really, an awesome survey response in terms of collecting that market data. When we collect the market data, we use a survey. So each position is defined to make sure we're gathering market data, or accurate market data. Again, you know, one community might have a position, but maybe the job title is a little different. So we make sure we define those positions. So when we're matching those, even if the job title is different, we can still use that market data as a match if the position's doing the same responsibilities. We also review all of the information to make sure it's appropriate for the position. And salary ranges are our preferred method. Because when you look at actual salaries, a lot can go into that, right? Maybe the longevity of the employee, any potential bonuses or increases they've been given. So we really look at that range data to make sure that we're gathering accurate market data. And then everything that we show within the report reflects the current market for the positions that were surveyed. From there, we put together the compensation plan. The compensation plan was developed at the 50th percentile of the salaries of the communities surveyed. And when we talk about 50th percentile, that really means right in the middle of the market. So 50% of those are paying more, 50% are paying less. You're a payer at the 50th percentile or the median of the market. The pay ranges and pay plans were also calculated at the 50th percentile. And again, there's 17 grades, so every grade has a pay range, one being the lowest, 17 being the highest. And all of the ranges were built off the average market midpoint, and then 20% below, 20% above, to create that range spread. When we look at proposed implementation of a new classification and compensation plan, there's kind of three key components. First, if there's any positions that are falling below the minimum, they should be raised to the minimum as soon as possible because that shows that they've been paid below market. So anyone that's below should be brought to that minimum as soon as possible. Employees who are within the range for their classification will be slotted into the new plan at the appropriate rate within the range and also getting a 4% increase that's budgeted through the city. And then the last bullet point does not apply, but I always like to share if it did. So no one is currently outside of the maximum of the ranges that we're proposing. But if they were, we would never recommend a reduction in their pay. We would just say they should stay there until the market catches up. But again, that one does not apply. And then going forward, we want this to be a classification and compensation plan that you can use for many years. So we've provided tools that you can update it annually. If you have a new position, you can slot that position into the new classification or into the classification plan. If you have a position that maybe has taken on additional duties or you have a couple positions that have combined and you want to rescore those, we've provided those tools. So you're able to establish, modify, or remove positions as necessary. And so it's a document you can use going forward to update. And then on the compensation side, it's important to update it annually as well. So you don't have to do a full market survey for many years, but you want to make sure that you look at what the average increases are given by those comparable communities. Update your compensation ranges based on that. Move employees through those pay ranges annually as you're able to and through the budgetary steps. And then same with considering pay adjustments for employees. So we really want it to be a document that you can use and implement for many years. Okay, so that's a brief overview of the process and the report. I'm happy to answer any questions. Or Rebecca, if I missed anything, please.
I will just note one thing. We actually only had one employee out of the, I think, 60-some non-represented that was even close to the midpoint of the range. So there was nobody outside on the top end. There was only one employee that was close to the mid-range or to the midpoint of the range. There were a couple employees who were below the minimum. Those employees will be brought up to at least the minimum in 2026, which is the first year that this will be implemented.
I just have a question on the comparable community. Did that include private sector?
It did not. So we are not typically successful at ever getting response from private sectors. So we really focus on the other comparable communities in the region or in the area.
Okay. What's great about the identification of these comparable communities is that we can use this list for various other things that we do internally for several years to come. And the data provided through this study, as far as, if you want to, yeah, this slide, total equalized value, property tax levy per capita, basic spending per capita, those are... We can see how the city of Fort Atkinson stacks up on those categories with our comparables. And that table is in the report that's in the packet on the city's website and in front of the council tonight.
How do you determine the upper level of a population limit that you would include in the study? So 6,200 to 26,000, how do you arrive at the 26,000?
Typically, go like two times higher and two times lower. So your population is like...
12,000.
12,000. So we doubled that and then the lower end of that. That's typically what we look at. Because when you get to the bigger populations, their numbers are going to be a lot higher if they have a lot larger tax base. And so we're really looking for communities that have a similar financial ability to pay.
And then the average market midpoint. Do you ever throw out any outliers on either end of that to determine what the midpoint is? Or how do you reach that number?
Yeah. So for each position, we look at that data and make sure that there are true matches, right? So the position is a match. So we're going to leave anything in, even if it might be... If it is a position match, we're going to leave it in and not take it out. When we look at, let's say there's five positions within a grade. So our philosophy is always positions that score similarly, based on those nine factors, should be compensated similarly. So looking at the market data for all of the positions within a grade and then looking at the midpoint, I know it's kind of hard to explain, the midpoint of the market and averaging that is the best way to determine what the compensation should be for those positions.
Just one other question, I think, for now. In your opinion, were we ripe for this study? I mean, are we overdue for something?
Yeah. I think what I noticed when I was looking at it and I was reviewing everything today, and Rebecca kind of alluded to it. So a lot of your ranges are going up, right? So your ranges weren't totally off, but there's a lot more growth for positions because the maximums are increasing, and that's what we see with the market. So I think it was a good time to do the study, and this will set you up to be successful for the next, you know, at least five years, but hopefully longer.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else for... Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
On to 7B is ATV, UTV ordinance, six-month review per Section 95-160 of the municipal code. Please Chief bump.
Hello, everyone. I provided you with a six-month additional. What I've been doing with this memo, since we're doing it every six months, I feel it's more valuable. If it's a good 18th month snapshots, you can see everything all together. So I've just been adding to the memo each time or each six months, so you can see a good picture right in front of you each time. This year brought some new calls for service related to ATV, UTVs that I haven't had in the past, including our first accident, minor, no injury accident, just property damage only. And then a couple arrests related to OWI or operating while intoxicated, and then a couple cases that involve drugs or under the influence of drugs while driving a UTV. So maybe hopefully outliers. You know, it just happened to be that six month, but those did occur and those are part of our data this last six months. Is there any questions about the data that's provided that I can maybe answer for you?
In comparison to, say, autos in the city, is this like massively more or average across the board the same?
If you compare UTVs, a calls-for-service reference vehicle call for services? Is that what your question is?
Yeah, compared to just if they were driving cars.
We have obviously way more cars on the road. Our vehicle contacts related to automobiles is obviously higher. Our car accidents are obviously quite a bit higher. We just have more vehicles on the road. So that's going to be more.
I guess I'm looking for, I know in the beginning, you forecasted a massive amount of OWIs, and they have not... Although you have had a couple, but you haven't had a massive amount like you forecasted?
I don't recall ever forecasting we'd have a massive amount of OWIs, so I don't know where you're going with that question, which can you rephrase it?
Okay, you had heartfelt opinions of the increased amount of stuff that would be not good for the city. And I'm just looking to see if you still feel that that's what you're incurring.
I still feel that ATVs and UTVs on the road cause more work for our officers. I do still feel that they're unsafe on our roadways, and it's not probably ideal. So I still feel the same about the... Of them driving on the road, I don't think it's great for our community. I don't think it's safe. But it is here, so.
Okay, I'm not looking to start a pick-up fight with you. I was just curious of your opinion in the beginning versus your opinion now.
The only thing that's changed is that when we started, it was unknown. And today, it's known. And I don't like to count on luck and hope, but we've had good luck, and relying on hope, things have been okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
I'll maybe pose a question differently. I guess you had mentioned like the OWI and drug offense. I guess there's correlation causation. Do you think that it was caused by people who tend to drive ATV, UTVs? Or maybe they lost their driver's license and they feel they can drive that instead? Or that it just happened to be like, if they were in a car, it probably would have yielded the same result?
I mean, potentially, probably. The people who engage in that type of activity are going to do it no matter what they're operating or what they're doing for the day. So I don't think there's any direct correlation with ATV, UTVs, or vehicles. I think it's just the person. So I think we've been fortunate in that area where we haven't seen a lot of issues in that area. That's definitely the last thing we want.
Okay, thank you.
Can you give us a little more detail about the one accident?
It was a minor accident. It was actually the person who was in the UTV was at fault for the incident, but then left the scene prior to officer's arrival. It was initially investigated as a hit-and-run, but then turned out to, we didn't go that route with the incident. So it did happen on the city streets. It wasn't in like a parking lot or anything like that.
And probably hard to compare the results from here to like other moving vehicles, but the ratio of warnings to citations, just anecdotally, do you think that that is probably pretty similar to what you see? Hard to compare, I get that, that's a...
I would probably say no. I think our officers are... The majority of the violations that we're seeing are not where people are driving recklessly or dangerously. They're just violations of the ordinance. So driving without their headlights on, driving after hours, not having unregistered or improperly registered vehicles. It's a lot of the different violations that just grab your attention when the officers are on patrol doing proactive police work. So we've had a couple criminal arrests that have occurred with some of these traffic stops, but for the most part, our officers are running into the normal citizen who just forgot to register their UTV or didn't have their proper registration posted on the vehicle, or they are out after hours. And the officers are grabbing onto those ones that are easy to see and identify. In reality, I have about, you know, we train all of our officers on ATV, UTV enforcement according to our ordinance and according to the DNR laws. But in reality, I have four, maybe five officers that feel really comfortable in doing it. So almost all the activity is from two to four officers that are just in tune with it more so than the others. Not to say that my officers aren't busy, they're all busy all day long, but you know, when they have downtime, the ones that are out, you know, filling the timer noticing it and taking action when they see it. Thank you.
And clearly, from the data, issuing a lot of warnings.
Yeah, I mean, we're, yeah, my officers are out there trying to write these people tickets because that's not the intent. I'm not saying that couldn't change in the future. I think as time goes on, I think one of the biggest negatives that we've found so far is that because we have an ATV, UTV ordinance that allows them to drive on the road, people see that. And what we're finding is that there's other violations that are coming up because people are, oh, I can drive a golf cart. Oh, I can drive a dirt bike, minibike that's not legal for the road. And they start stretching it to meet like what they think they can do without actually reading the ordinance. So that's kind of one of those unintended consequences that we're seeing right now is that we're having to deal with that on top of it now. So it's kind of adding to it. And that data is not included in here because they are not ATVs or UTVs. So they're not recorded in the same way, so you don't see that data.
Just note, I had somebody reach out from one of the clubs that was very proactive in helping get this ordinance through. They held a fundraiser at the beginning of the month, the Ride for Racks. And with the help of having Ford as a community to allow the people to come through, they're able to raise another $60,000 for the Fort Atkinson Hospital Manogram Program. So it helps out a lot within the community for other fundraising organizations. So like you said, I really hope that this is how this stays, where it's just these minor incidences that we're coming upon.
Yep. My job in the beginning, when you wanted to introduce this ordinance, is to stand up for what my job represents, and that is, this is probably not safe. It's probably not great. It's going to add work. It's, you know, things are going to happen. And I still have that stance. I don't think it's ideal, but it is what it is. So I'm just working through it and dealing with it.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All good, all right.
All right, moving on to item eight, Resolutions and Ordinances. 8A is review and possible action relating to the resolution adopting the 2026 Stormwater Utility Rate. Director Navin?
Good evening. All right, so in 2024, the city council authorized staff to work with Trilogy Inc. to aid in evaluating the current financial picture of the city's three utilities, as well as look at the future, forecasting future expenses and revenues. During the 2025 budget process, council reviewed the need for an increase in utility rates to meet anticipated expenses as documented in more detail in the attached analysis. Trilogy provided a presentation at the November 19th council meeting on their work. Sorry, back in 2024, they provided that. And staff has noted the salient points below included the memo for each utility as an attachment. So here, you'll see the past revenue rates and then the projected and requested rate increase scheduled per the attached study. So for 2026, that is a 15% increase or roughly $12. Overall, the city's storm utility is an acceptable financial position. However, emergency repairs, like the Milwaukee Ave Storm Sewer Project, can quickly change that. So continued rate increases are a sustainable way to keep that utility in a healthy financial position while completing the necessary maintenance and infrastructure replacement work for future projects. If this resolution is adopted by the city council, the proposed rate increases would be effective on January 1st, 2026. This rate increase has been incorporated into the 2026 budget document presented to the city council at the October 8th budget workshop. So staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution establishing the 2026 stormwater utility rates at $90.60 per ERU per year as presented. Any questions?
I have a couple questions. And this just might be me reading these charts wrong. The projection that goes out to 2030 looks like we're going to have far more in revenue above what's needed just to cover our bases. Would there be room then to move this down a little bit since it's projected to be so high in 2030?
Most likely, what you're going to see with a healthier fund is more work done in that utility. If you remember, earlier this year, I came with the storm sewer that was packed tight. So it helps to address some issues like that and our failing infrastructure, like the MK Storm Sewer that I was here with last council meeting, to be a little bit more proactive to some of those in that we're not coming back being reactive. So I think it would be hard to say that we'd be able to lower that at this time.
Okay, so it'd be $12 per EU in 2026?
An additional $12.
Yep, and then an additional nine in 2027.
Correct, but for right now, we're just approving the 2026.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Huckabee, were you referring to the chart on page three of the stormwater of that Trilogy report?
It's page 118 of the packet. And like I said, I might be looking at it wrong.
Excuse me, so if you look at that chart on the table number or chart number... On page 116 of the packet, so two pages prior to that, it does have that revenue at the current rates level that dashed. And then in 2030, it's really, if we stayed at our current rates, it's showing that we would really just be paying for our debt service and O&amp;M expenses. And that's out to 30, but you can see kind of why we have to increase, continue to increase those rates to not only pay for the debt service we have associated with the stormwater utility and our operation, operating and maintenance expenses, but then also have funds available for capital improvements, such as the Milwaukee Ave Storm Sewer and other TMDL, the total... Remind me, what TMDL is?
Total Maintenance Daily Load. I'm not sure if I got the M right.
And then...
Max, there you go.
There you go. Thank you for that. So the, and the state does, will mandate and dictate certain things that we have to do to reduce that maximum load. So we feel, along with Trilogy, when they did this study, felt that it was in our best interest to sustain the UTV. felt that it was in our best interest to sustain the utility to continue to increase the rates with this further report.
Thank you. That helps clarify.
Thank you.
So if what I'm hearing then is there, through some increases, it will help us more proactively care for the stormwater system in hopes of avoiding some of the, a failure in different spots. I mean, we haven't had the budget to do that in the past, and now we're kind of saying there is some benefit to proactively caring for the system to ward off.
Correct. Yeah. And kind of what Rebecca alluded to regarding our MS4 permit through the DNR and the continued requirements that are coming through with that will add on to this piece as well.
Just for update of that ERU is assessed as one per house usually, correct?
For residential law.
And that's split out six ways on the water bill, if I recall right.
Correct. I move to approve the resolution adopting the 2026 Stormwater Utility Rate.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eight B, review and possible action relating to the resolution adopting the 2026 wastewater utility rates for Navin again.
Thank you. All right. Same story here with the trilogy report back in 2024. The last full rate study was completed in 2020. Overall increases of 6% per year were implemented in 21, 22, and 23. And 2020 rate study projected three, 3% per year increases for 2024 and future years. Is recommended to continue with moderate annual rate increases based on updated revenues and expenses. The rates were increased 3% 2025. There's the recommended rate increase of 3% again for 26. Utility is projected to draw down reserves over the next few years through capital spending, but maintain a healthy fund balance. Overall, the city's wastewater utility is in good financial shape. Continuing rate increases are sustainable way to keep the utility in a healthy financial position while completing necessary capital plant upgrades and collection system, maintenance and infrastructure replacements. If the resolution is adopted by the city council, the proposed rate increases would be effective January 1st of 2026. And this rate increase has been incorporated into the 2026 budget document presented to the city council at the October 8th budget meeting as well. And staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution establishing the 2026 water, wastewater utility rates as presented in the attached resolution.
No question. I move to approve the resolution adopting the 2026 wastewater utility rates.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, reports of officers, boards, and committees. Nine A is the city manager's report. Manager Housman.
Thank you. The 2026 budget and 2026 to 2031 capital improvements plan was presented to the city council at a workshop on October 8th. Thank you to everyone who participated, including the city council, staff, and the public. The draft budget is posted on the city's website from that meeting, and the public hearing on the budget will take place on November 4th during the regular city council meeting. By the end of next week, there will be the next iteration of the budget document posted on the website and available in the at City Hall for review. During Fire Prevention Week, the Fort Atkinson Fire Department held an open house on Saturday, October 11th. Thank you to the 22 staff members who volunteered and the countless visitors and guests who attended and participated in various demonstrations and, and other items. It was a lot of fun. The Horde Museum recently celebrated Governor W D Horde's birthday at its annual Governor W D Horde Day. Horde was the 16th governor of Wisconsin from 1889 to 1891, and he would have been 189 years old. So he was not in attendance at his party. But to celebrate, the museum hosted Civil War reenactors and unveiled a new temporary exhibit on three generations of the Horde family in Fort Atkinson. And that exhibit will be displayed until the end of the week. The Dwight Foster Public Library collaborated with the school district of Fort Atkinson to create 185 new library cards for students whose families opted in during the school registration process. New library cards were mailed out in September, and the library is excited to welcome new faces to the building and introduce them to all the wonderful resources and opportunities offered. Thrive ED and J C EDC held its annual meeting and presentation on Thursday, October 16th in Jefferson. The theme was the future works here, AI and Jefferson County. Fort Atkinson was well represented with council president Jekyll, myself, Jed Drager, chamber director Shawna Wesley, and Sarah Weir. Loose Homes has started their first four houses in the city, two in the Maple Grove subdivision and two in the Ridgeview Estates division. The road construction in Ridgeview Estates will be complete in a couple of weeks, and the curbing gutter are done and paving will commence soon on the remaining portion of Marigold Drive. Representative Joan Fitzgerald will be hosting office hours at the Dwight Foster Public Library on October 23rd from four to five. Trick or treating in the city of Fort Atkinson will be held on Sunday, October 26th from one to four. And there will also be a trunk or treat event on Halloween, the 31st from six to eight PM at Jones Park. And construction continues on the Habitat for Humanity House on Schumacher Way. The organization is hosting a rural rally tailgate on October 30th on site. And keep an eye out for information on a city build day where elected officials and city staff members will be invited to volunteer for building projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10, unfinished business. Tonight we have none. Item 11, new business. 11A is review and possible action relating to memorandum of understanding between the city of Fort Atkinson, the Fort Atkinson Historical Society, relating to a 2026 payment in support of the Horde Historical Museum operations. Manager Housman.
Thank you. The city and the historical society have a MOU or a memorandum of understanding relating to a payment from the historical society to the city to offset the city's personnel costs for full-time staff. The MOU was for the term 2023 through 2025 and provided an $11,000 annual payment to the city. So over the summer, Merrily Lee, the museum director, and I met a couple of times to talk about a new agreement. I did request that the historical society increase that payment from $11,000 to $18,000 annually and extend the term of the MOU for three years. However, the historical society would like to start discussions with the Dairy Shrine as well as the city on more equitable financial and operational agreements between those three entities for the future. Those discussions are planned to begin in 2026. So the historical society did approve a MOU for one additional year, 2026, at the same amount, $11,000 to be paid by, from the historical society to the city. So staff does recommend that the city council approve that MOU that's in the packet tonight for the fiscal year 2026 and direct the city manager and the museum director to begin discussions among the city, the historical society, and the Dairy Shrine relating to a new agreement between the entities that are, that splits the costs associated with the building operations, capital improvements, and staffing more equitably. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I move, excuse me, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Fort Atkinson and the Fort Atkinson Historical Society relating to a 2026 payment in support of Horde Historical Museum operations.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11B, a review and possible action relating to a mechanic street repair proposal from Forest Landscaping, Director Navin.
Thank you. So back on October, Friday, October 3rd, you may recall, we had a water main break on Mechanic Street right behind City Hall here. This was considered a quite substantial break as it ended up lifting the asphalt on 180-foot stretch and buckling all the pavement. So we requested for Forest Landscape to come in and scrape that pavement off so we could better assess what we had for infrastructure underneath, ensure there is no further damage done to our subgrade. And because they're already in town working on our two other projects, they were easily accessible and were able to take care of that right away. So and because they are currently mobilized, we did ask them then to provide a proposal for the repaving of the road. So per Wisconsin statute, public construction projects estimated between 5,000 and 25,000 require the publication of a class one legal notice before contract execution. With city council approval, staff will publish this notice in the daily Jefferson Union to meet the statutory requirements. To expedite the assessment of the road base after the main break, staff approved the Forest Landscaping proposal of $4,385 to remove that asphalt that allowed for the inspection of the roadway base, which confirmed no further underlying damage or need for additional fill materials. Staff then requested a proposal for regrading and repaving, which was provided at $20,525. Attached to the proposals for regrading and repaving Mechanic Street for $20,525 and invoice for $4,385 for removing the asphalt. So this total project, including asphalt removal, regrading, and roadway paving totals $24,910. This work is not to exceed $24,910. It will be paid for by the water utility out of the mains maintenance account, which is where all water main break repair work is charged. Staff recommends that the city council direct staff to publish the class one notice of the public works project in the daily Jefferson County Union and approve the proposal from Forest Landscaping LLC for regrading and repaving Mechanic Street at no cost to cost not to exceed $20,525 pending completion of the required notice. And just to, to tie that all together, Forest will be back in town to finish Marigold paving. So we were able to piggyback off of that knowing that the asphalt plants will be closing next month and just the need to get all that. And so it ended up working out pretty well, or hopefully will, and it worked out pretty well.
I'll just also note that that class one notice that referred to in the memo is just a notice of the construction. So it's, it's not a notice forbid. We, as, as Director Navin mentioned, we are not required to publicly bid the this project due to the relatively low cost. We'll say, we'll call it relatively low.
Yeah. In relation to the last time I was up here for emergency repair, right? It's, this is relatively low cost compared to the storm sewer, which was exceeding 150,000 and the changes, some of the requirements associated with that.
And this one was a full-on emergency repair.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Still is.
Yeah. It was. We got, we got the, the biggest emergency taken care of. Now we got one more before the, the white stuff flies.
Any further questions for staff?
You mentioned just like the Mike Asphalt will be closing. So like if this happened a month into the future, you just have to wait until the springtime to repave?
Yeah, there gets to a point where asphalt plants are closed, then you've got to make do with what you've got. Not that I have not had to experience that. I'm going to hope I don't have to. But yeah, you know, typically they close around Thanksgiving. And then you have that time period between where it's, so like a typical water main break in the middle of winter, when you have just a, a normal sized removal of asphalt, that's all just cold patch material that's placed back in there. That'd be a lot of cold patch.
Which cold patch is a lot more expensive compared to regular.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle. Absolutely. And it's, I, I'm not by any means an expert in it, but I don't think it's easy to put down other than a shovel.
Yeah, it's not very, it doesn't hold up as well either.
Looking for motion?
Yep.
I move to approve the proposal for the mechanic street repair from Forest Landscaping at a cost not to exceed $20,500, 20,535.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. 11C, review and possible action relating to the purchase of a Pierce PUC pumper rescue fire engine through Reliant Fire Apparatus by your chief Peterson.
Good evening. Tonight's request for, is for the approval of a new fire engine. While this is the first time the council's considering this proposal, this has been on the city councils. The city's capital improvement plan for several years. Purchasing this engine has been a long-term priority for our department. Based on the age of our current apparatus, ongoing maintenance issues with older equipment, and the recent discovery of frame rust and failed DOT inspection on the vehicle we're replacing. I will say staff understands the significance of this purchase and the financial commitment of the city with this. We've been very deliberate through this process to ensure this vehicle fits our mission, is of value, and will serve the community for the next 30 years. So let me walk you through the, the project background. The vehicle being replaced is a 1999 Pierce engine that recently failed its annual inspection due to severe frame rust. This was a common issue with apparatus built during that era because of manufacturing methods that allowed salt and brine to penetrate the frame rails. This process has been corrected by the manufacturer, and we're also taking additional steps for precautions with the new vehicle by adding extra underbody weatherproofing. I will say this is a design issue, not a maintenance issue. And in 40 years in the fire service, I can confidently say Fort Atkinson maintains its fleet better than anybody I've, I've ever seen. As I discussed in the packet, NFPA recommends a 15-year service life for front-like vehicles and five to 10 years in reserve. So at the time of replacement, this vehicle would have been 30 years old. So this is a request, not simply that its time is up, but it's driven by necessity for the department. So I'll walk you through how we recommended this vehicle. I appointed an apparatus committee led by Division Chief Allard and Captain Chase, who joined me tonight, and tasked them with assessing our equipment, identifying our true operational needs, and most importantly, finding opportunities to reduce our overall size of our fleet. Good. I will note that we are a different fire department than we were the last time we purchased an engine. We are now a combination career department and have a responsibility of over 2,500 calls per year and covering 104 square miles. This creates a different need in an engine that we had before, and the engine needs to be designed different because of that. This project represented hundreds of hours of review, research, and discussion with multiple vendors, staff, and outside consultants. All the major manufacturers were reviewed, and then we did a deep dive into the top three, which were Pierce, E1, and Seagrave. I also discussed in detail how we came up with this vehicle and the reason we're combining a rescue squad and a fire engine. And I think most importantly, we are reducing our fleet size and saving $1.2 million in today's cost by doing that. We also evaluated every aspect of this design multiple times to ensure the vehicle only has what is necessary to meet our needs without any unnecessary features or embellishments. So I'll talk about the financial side that you saw. The total cost for the vehicle is $1,246,833. We selected Pierce Manufacturing Factory, which is a Wisconsin company. And we're using Reliant Fire Apparatus, who is the sole dealer for Pierce in our region. I'll say that staff worked really closely with Reliant to reduce about $65,000 in options and equipment to help to control costs the best we could. Another really important note is Pierce has agreed to take our current out-of-service engine as a trade-in at a rate of, at an amount of $40,000, which is significantly more than its market value. In fact, it's, it's almost that scrap value in the condition that it's in. And we'll be reusing as much equipment as possible off that vehicle to save additional money. It is interesting that we have to buy a vehicle so far in the future, and I appreciate that. But with the fire service apparatus now, there's significant lead times for the manufacturing to get in line, and Pierce was able to move us up on that. But it is still 34 a month wait for this vehicle. But the good news with that is no money is due now. It only due at time of our final delivery. The other good news is there's no other fire equipment becoming due or aerial apparatus for until at least 2032. And I'll also note that the new township contract recognizes their involvement with the engine, and perhaps the manager can speak a little bit more about that fund we set up with that.
Yeah, I guess I will just mention that the $1.2 million will likely, the, the cost will likely need to be borrowed in 2028. However, that full 1.2 won't be borrowed because we will have funds set aside from the towns to help offset the cost. So in general, the city makes up about 67% of the budget and 67% of the use of our shared fire equipment. So we, I would anticipate borrowing about 67% of that $1.2 million to pay our share. We don't quite know if we're going to have the entire town share, you know, saved at that. Uh, we don't quite know if we're going to have the entire town share, um, you know, saved uh at that point. Um, but at the very least, we could um use future payments as as part of our debt service payments as well as if we needed to borrow more. But the the importance of tonight is that uh, you know, if the council approves this purchase, you are committing a future council to borrowing. Uh, but you're also locking in this price for twenty twenty-eight, which if the last five years have been any indication with fire equipment. Uh, especially, uh, it will not be one point two million dollars uh three years from now.
Thank you, and I'll I'll note one of the manufacturers uh doesn't even guarantee their price at time at time of order. And you end up paying what they determine upon delivery of any price increases from when you order, so Pierce is really a unique company that allows us to lock this price in. So staff recommends council authorize city manager to execute a contract with Reliant Fire Apparatus. For the purchase of a new fire engine at a cost of one million two hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars upon delivery in August of twenty-eight. Um, normally I'd ask for questions and if it's all right with the council, I. I thought of some questions that you're probably thinking of, so I'll I'll preempt them and maybe clear up some things. Um, first of all, why does that fire engine cost one point two million dollars? Um, when they were significantly less five, ten years ago. Um, what part of the problem is there's um a lot more um. Manufacturing and um engine standards that we have to uh buy by uh from NFPA. Um, but this is an issue that every city and township is facing now on how to afford these engines. Uh, the other problem was there used to be quite a few manufacturer of fire engines and in the corporate world. Those have been bought up and consolidated into just a a handful of vehicles now, which is also driven up the uh the price of it. So why not buy a used fire engine instead of a new fire engine, which is a good question. Uh, unlike vehicles that you replace kind of when you're just tired of it, uh, most departments will use a fire engine until they're unusable. Um, and to buy a used engine, you're really buying somebody else's problem at that point. And you'd be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for a vehicle that would need to be replaced in a handful of years anyhow, so the. The economics usually aren't there for used apparatus. So can we repair the other engine or refurbish it to put it back into service? Uh, this is something we gave strong consideration to, and unfortunately, the answer is no. Um, that frame corrosion is unreparable and won't pass our D O T inspections any longer. We also looked into replacing the entire frame of the vehicle and found that cost to be two hundred and sixty-nine thousand one hundred forty-two dollars. Uh, with a twenty percent contingency on top of that and twenty percent down uh before they started it. So obviously that became a a nonstarter for us to to invest that amount of money into a vehicle that would be thirty years old pretty soon. And so the last question uh I'll answer is what happens if we don't buy it and which is a fair question. Um, that would leave us with two fire engines in our fleet and as we've discussed before. Um, on a normal house fire, we need at least two engines, our attack engine and a secondary engine for water supply to begin operations. By having only two engines, we're committing everything to the scene of the fire, which is normally needs three engines. And leaves nothing in reserve for that inevitable second call. Also, with just two calls or two engines, we're really unable to operate in the township. Because one engine is dedicated solely to drafting, moving water up to the scene of the house where at least two other engines are uh being used. And then finally, um, two only two engines puts us into a real bind when. One is out for training or service or has a longer term repair, we're left with a single engine. And then solely relying on mutual aid if it's available to um to conduct firefighting operations. And finally, um, like everybody, we're involved in mutual aid with neighbors helping neighbors. And when we're down to two engines, we will not commit our second engine out of town to other towns for mutual aid. And that really is unfair to them, but also unfair to us in that we would expect them to come help us when when we're not willing to help somebody else, so. Um, if it's that purchase, we will make do, but um it will leave us with our next engine being twenty years old and it's something. We're just kicking the can down the road for an inevitable purchase in a few years. So I hope that answered the questions that were bouncing around your heads and I'd be happy to uh do a deeper dive into that category or.
I have an adjacent question.
Sorry?
I have an adjacent question.
Sure.
So this is going to take thirty-four months.
Yes.
So what's the plan with one truck now for those thirty-four months?
That that um, we're we're not doing outbound mutual aid with with engines.
And to be clear, we have two.
Yes, we have two engines right now, um, so we're not doing outbound um mutual aid with an engine, we'll go with an aerial or a tenderer squad. And uh, we're uh limiting the amount of um times that vehicle can leave town for maintenance and we're trying to do everything we can in-house. When it does leave, we notify neighbors that we're going to need extra assistance um to come into calls where we normally wouldn't call them.
So we have three. I know I'm confused.
Yes, we have three uh city owned three fire.
Okay, but this one is completely out of service.
We have one complete out of service now.
Okay.
We have it in a ready state.
Mm-hmm.
Should we get a significant fire, we can bring it to the scene. Um, like that last fire we had a few years ago where it would be need to sit and pump for. And hours and hours or days, we'll we'll drive it over there, but it is not um in service at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
How long ago did the long lead time kind of start coming into play or has it always been a major factor?
I'm going to consult council, chief, you want to take that?
Division, can you come up to the podium, please? There's there's people on the Zoom and nobody can hear your answer if you don't speak into the microphone.
I think you really saw it start about twenty twenty.
Okay.
Covid hit, um, obviously those manufacturers had to start separating workers, um, other spaces away. Um, so I would say five years or so.
Okay, and that's kind of when we saw the major jump in prices along with.
Yep, yep, and that affected the fire service too, so.
Even then, five or six years ago, how long would it typically take to order a truck like this and get it?
I would say probably eighteen months or so. Time you spec it and go through the process and the build and then review and so eighteen months or so.
Which is a lot more justifiable at that point.
Right, right. My chief said, uh, if if we go forward with this, they put us in a B M P spot. So that actually they they slid Ford Atkinson in there for us, um, because they know we have one out of service, so otherwise it would be much longer than that.
And I suppose the other departments that um we have mutual aid agreements, they have trucks that fail, get taken out of service and then they. Um, they too have to make accommodations with those that they support um somewhat. This isn't an uncommon occurrence. Right, unfortunate stat. In fact, the the last department I was with. Uh, had only two engines and we found both of them didn't pass D O T inspection and.
Right.
Um, it's a significant issue with with that era of fire engines that um they're rusting at an accelerated rate. So yeah, I guess you never want to have any like thing like this happen, but replacing it with uh, what did you call it, a dual function apparatus? Um, I mean, there's something good that can come out of that, I suppose. Yeah, and we we spent quite a bit of time on that and um that was important direction I gave staff is to reduce our fleet as much as possible. So while this is about a hundred and fifty thousand more than a base engine, um, we're able to replace a squad vehicle that would. Be one point two million dollars down the road and have one less vehicle that needs tires and insured and needs preventative maintenance, so. Um, it it really working out well for us, um, and accomplishing a lot of the goals that are otherwise difficult to accomplish. Yeah, I think that's an important part of the picture is what it allows future um, future savings. Right. Um, unfortunate that the that the engine has failed, but um. That's a fact of life. Yeah, and and it is close to the end of its service life. I mean, it's twenty-six years old now and um. But we, as I mentioned in the packet, we are extending out our service lives as long as possible and some up to twenty percent longer. And so um, we don't want to just get to a date and say, hey, we need a new engine, city council, we're waiting uh until we need one by necessity, as I mentioned.
And and then if we um borrow down the road, um, and we're on uh for sixty-seven percent of that cost, we're looking at eight hundred thousand or so roughly.
I'll have better numbers for you in twenty twenty-eight.
All right, um, I move to approve the purchase of a Pierce P U C pumper rescue in twenty twenty-eight to replace engine eighty-one sixty-three at a cost um. Of one million two hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Reliant Fire Apparatus for the same.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess one last question I'd I didn't get to jumping earlier. Um, I understand that yes, um, fire equipment has become more expensive in recent years, there's. You know, um, certain jurisdictions are suing a conglomerate of um manufacturers. Um, I guess more specifically, so I understand the sharp increase in price, I guess. The question I have is, are there any specific features unique to Ford Atkinson that are. Contributing to the cost, you know, foam tank size, whatever, um, et cetera.
Um, Chief, he might be able to talk a little bit more on that. Uh, one of the things I mentioned is we reduced everything that was an embellishment, as I mentioned. Um, we do have an EMS responsibility now, and so the engine is designed to address that. That has interior cabinet space that we can carry EMS uh drugs and equipment. So that engine can be, although it's not an ambulance, it can go to the scene of ambulance calls to begin care. And that takes a little bit different design engine, because obviously you can't store that type of material on the outside of the vehicle where it's where it's not weather controlled. Um, other than that, we have foam on there, um, which most suburban departments do at this point. Um, we also carry a thousand gallons of water and um that tank's a little bit bigger than probably uh some of the. Close suburban departments to Milwaukee because they have so many hydrants available to them. Um, we have responsibilities in the township, uh, so we typically will go a larger water tank. But overall, to answer your question, the engine is spec similar to what our neighbors would would spec it as, that pretty close.
All right, thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item eleven D review and possible action relating to the approval of ma- of the maintenance plan and agreement between the city of Ford Atkinson and Margaret Schr- Schrader. And Paul Smith for the Dwight Foster Public Library Native Wildflower. Wow. Wildflower and Prairie Restoration Project, uh, Director Lippert.
Thank you, good evening. I'm here uh because two Ford Atkinson community members. Margaret Trader and Paul Smith would like to donate time and resources to create a native Wisconsin wildflower garden next to the Dwight Foster Public Library. The proposed garden would be fifteen feet by eight feet, uh, located to the northeast of the library. In what is currently um vacant green space. Um, it would be next to a service driveway leading to a uh storage shed that the library uses to house our our lawnmower. Um, we're currently not utilizing that green space, uh, and that property does belong to the city. If the garden were approved, Schrader and Smith would hire a company called Tall Grass Restoration from Milton to install the garden. And they would supplement uh tall grasses work um by adding additional plants. And then they proposed donating their time uh for weekly maintenance visits uh to monitor the garden and do spot weeding. Uh, and we did include additional details um from the maintenance plan that the donors came up with. The ultimate goals of this garden would be to encourage the establishment of native Wisconsin prairie plants, support pollinators. And grow flowers for community enjoyment and education. Uh, this project would also support the mayor's monarch pledge uh that the city of Ford Atkinson. Took in twenty twenty-two. Uh, looking at the financial impact, library staff anticipate minimal, um, or perhaps none, um. No financial impact to the city of Ford Atkinson for the project. The donors um intend to personally pay for the installation and stewardship plan from Tall Grass Restoration. And then after uh the initial installation, uh, those donors would volunteer their time for the weekly maintenance visits. And um, manager Housman drafted an agreement um for the city and the donors. And according to the proposed agreement, uh Schroder Schrader and Smith uh would be financially responsible. For returning the area to grass if they were no longer willing or able to maintain or monitor the project. Um, but if the city uh determined that there was a higher and better use for the property, then the city would be responsible for removing the garden. Um, and likely turning it into whatever the better plan is for that space. Uh, the library board did discuss this uh project on October thirteenth. And the library board voted to recommend that the city council authorize the city manager to execute the agreement between the city of Ford Atkinson. And the donors in order to begin um this project. And we've included a site plan and a maintenance plan, uh, as well as that proposed agreement that the donors are in favor of. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
I just have a comment. This is one of the reasons I love Ford Atkinson. Margaret and Paul, this is a very generous um offer of their time and money to do the tall grass, and I think it's wonderful.
So so generous, and I will say that they um are not necessarily looking for recognition, although we all really appreciate it. Um, they would have preferred to have been anonymous, um, but so generous and kind and it would be a lovely addition, I think.
Yes, it will be um if approved, an attractive addition to that space and um very much appreciate I do the uh uh willingness of the donors to uh keep an eye and maintain it going forward.
I will all just mention also mention um that this uh does not require any uh maintenance through burning. The that's not um this type of of garden, so we did, we did inquire about that uh at the um library board level.
I move to approve the maintenance plan and agreement between the city of Ford Atkinson and Margaret Schroeder and Paul Smith for the Dwight Foster. Public Library Native Wildflower and Prairie Restoration Project.
Second.
Motion and multiple seconds, uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eleven E review and possible action relating to the reconfiguration of the city manager's office area and remodel of the recreation office at the municipal. Municipal municipal building, Parks and Rec Director Dayton.
Great, it's uh great to see all of you here tonight. So this is the final phase of the um office reconfiguration and then remodel. Which was approved in the twenty twenty-five C I P. Uh, included in your packet are the proposals to remove the built-in furniture from the nineteen hundreds. Uh, do have some construction on uh.
Nineteen nineties.
Nineteen nineties.
That's also part of the nineteen hundreds, so.
Um.
It can be both.
Also, uh, construct a more private uh transaction area. Um, in the city manager's office area and then also address some of our ADA non-compliant needs, so. Uh, this will also improve um citizen transaction with our city's court clerk. Uh, so that that those sensitive uh topics can be addressed and not the lobby, uh, and actually in a more um secluded area. The recreation reception area, that is a much smaller project, uh, so that can be handled in-house by our talented staff. We really just need to replace uh about seven to ten um uh tiles, floor tiles, so. Much easier for us to handle. Uh, both updates um would offer the area to be. Uh, open space so that our desk furniture can be rearranged for staff, um, and then uh adjusted for whatever those needs may be in the future. Um, among the submitted proposals, Mueller and Sons included a credit for the transaction window and then also the cost of paint, which came into play. Um, whereas the other proposals did not. So the total project cost exceeds the original amount of two uh twenty-eight thousand. Um, which was budgeted, uh, exceeded by seven thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Um, but then staff does propose that using overages, uh, using unspent C I P money and then also fund sixteen uh reserves. So um, we will be able to to uh pay for the project. Um, and then also schedule it, we would like to schedule it uh ideally, um, so that it minimizes any sort of disruption in uh public services. So uh, staff does recommend that city council approve or authorize the staff to accept the proposal from. Or authorize the staff to accept the proposal from Mueller and Sons at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars to complete the remodeling. Of the city manager's office and the recreation office area. I can take any questions.
So is there something that changed in the scope that got it out of budget?
Inflation a little bit, I would say that took, took a part in it. The, I know that with our desk furniture, for example. We got in front of the next hike in manufacturer increases. So that was one. The project itself seemed pretty straightforward, but it was a little more complex. For maybe like a smaller vendor or contractor. But then not necessarily big enough for a large scale contractor. So it was tough to find somebody who kind of fit in that middle as well.
I will mention the scope was actually reduced a little bit because of the budget. And at one point included office furniture in my office as well and office furniture in Judd's office. And we forewent both of those. Furniture projects to, to keep it as much in budget as possible.
And also to get it back into, or back into, to get ADA compliant. I think that is an important part of this in that there are two. There are reception counters in both of the offices that are currently not ADA compliant. And be a good time to address that. I move to approve the proposal from Mueller and Sons at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars to complete the remodeling of the city manager's office area and the recreation office area.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eleven F, review and possible action relating to the certified survey map for the property located at twelve hundred Janesville Avenue. Building Director Drager.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to address this one and the following agenda item as they are intertwined. So yes, this is a certified survey map review. Let me start off with the potential sale of city, city property as well. Sort of how this came about, the new owner of the former Fort Car Wash, ADAD Car Wash. Approached my office to discuss parking lot improvements. During those discussions, it was discovered that a future owner, not really sure how long ago. Had encroached on city owned property with paving for the queuing lane for the automatic car wash. While discussing this with the current owner, it was determined that with reducing that pavement. Back away from or off of city owned property, back on private property, it would greatly reduce the number of vehicles that'd be able to access that. I think the most of us have been through that lane and if you have a longer vehicle, making that swing into there would become cumbersome and a little bit difficult. Possibly having to back up and then go forward again. So there was some concerns from the property owner there. So city staff and the property owner had discussions on what a possible resolution for that would be. And before you is that proposed resolution. So we have a certified survey map, which does take a portion of the bike path, the city owned property to the west or behind the car wash. That's roughly three thousand, three hundred and seventy nine square feet. I shouldn't say roughly, that's what it is. The, the current owner did propose fifty cents a square foot. Without direction, that's what they came back with, probably looking at vacant land. The city staff responded with a slightly higher amount at a dollar fifty. Keeping in mind that there are several other situations around the city where this is going to come before you again, most likely. With buildings that have encroached on the city property or paving or gravel or something along those lines. So we wanted to establish. Slightly more positive for the city's financially amount rather than fifty cents from basically giving it away. But anyway, so that's, that's the proposals brought before you. One of the things that was brought up during the planning commission meeting was that even though the property lines are moving closer to the bike path. The pavement would not be permitted to be increased towards the bike path. So it's, this is establishing the required setback for paving. It would not allow room for increasing or encroaching the bike path any further with, with the paving. There was no suggestion for additional screening either because of the grade there. This does, is found to be in concert with the, with the comprehensive plan. And city staff does recommend approval of the CSM. I'll wait for the other, on the next agenda item. But does recommend approval and bank commission recommended the city council approve this at their last meeting as well on the fourteenth. And welcome any questions.
I move to approve the certified survey map for the property located at twelve hundred Janesville Avenue. Subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do you know how it is, I know it's before your time here and probably before a lot of our times is part of the city government here. How the encroachment happened in the first place?
Without knowing exactly when that happened, it's likely that there wasn't a review process for, for these situations. Formal review is something that we do now that really captures a lot of these ahead of time. Whereas in the past, it may not have been required. Yeah, we think the property line is here, survey may not have been brought forward. And the paving happened and really was not really ill intent from anybody, but it was just not a formal review at that time.
I would almost assume that this was back before the city even owned the bike trail path there.
Entirely.
It was actually owned by the railroad.
Entirely possible, yeah.
At that point, you know, nobody would have known or said or anything at that point, so. Any further discussion? We have the motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven G is review and possible action relating to the offer to purchase three thousand, three hundred and seventy nine square feet of city owned property. Along the Glacial River Bike Trail adjacent to the twelve hundred Janesville Avenue. Director Drager again.
Yes, thank you. I will just want to point out one last thing. The, the property owner was. Very helpful in this situation and was definitely being proactive, coming forward to see what kind of approvals were needed, which is how we were able to. Identify this ahead of time, which was very nice. So like I said, staff does, city staff does recommend the, the sale of this portion of land and welcome any questions.
I was trying to find in the packet, I saw the counter offer, but I didn't see the acceptance of that.
It should have been there. If it wasn't, I apologize, but it was for sure in the planning commission portion of that.
Okay.
Upon approval, we'll execute the, the full document.
Correct.
Approved by the city council.
And I'm just curious what the reaction was when you came back with two times as much or three times as much on the. Just from a business perspective.
An acceptance. There wasn't really a conversation about it. Yeah, it was just, so this is what we feel is more appropriate and, and, and the property owner agreed.
Okay, perfect. I move to approve the offer to purchase three thousand, three hundred and seventy nine square feet of city owned property along the Glacial Trail. Or River Bike Trail adjacent to twelve hundred Janesville Avenue.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve miscellaneous, tonight we have none. Item thirteen, public comment for matters not on the agenda. The city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for record when called upon: name, address, subject matter and contact info. No action will be taken on any public comments. Note for those on hybrid or Zoom meetings, please raise your virtual hand if you wish to speak as the chat box is not monitored. And you must be remain, remain muted if not recognized. Starting off tonight, we had Mr. House signed up to speak.
John House, one oh four Jefferson Street, F A Town. Good evening, everyone. I am going to mention the activity we have out at the new football fields where the Kiwanis, I guess, is doing everything. We are starting to find a lot more trespassing onto our land. And it's not only kids, but it's an adults. Three years ago, we have about, we have quite a few cameras set up on our land. About three years ago, we got a notification, somebody was trespassing on the land and the sheriff's department came out. And they caught a guy trespassing and it was also a drug incident. So if our police need pictures and stuff, the stuff that goes on out there, we'd be happy to accommodate. So we put up signs and the signs get ripped off within about a week. So that's, just want to bring that to your attention. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up is. The guys did a great job putting the picnic tables up in the pavilion this year. They stood them up on ends so the snow doesn't sit on top of them for the winter. So that was kind of a neat thing. And then they did a good job filling the cracks in. In the street adjacent to Sherman Avenue. I forget which one that was, but they did a great job on that one. But I am going to mention Montclair Street has really fallen apart. There is cracks in the blacktop that are this wide and this deep. And it's probably thirty, forty of them. In my opinion, that should be addressed. There is also where the doughboy is in McCoy Park. There is a patch job there that they did probably a year ago or so. That's already deteriorating. So I guess water and freezing thaw, it's not going to make matters any better. So I thank you.
Thank you. Any, this will be a call for anyone on Zoom wishing to speak. Second call for anyone on Zoom. I will pose a public comment. Item fourteen, claims appropriations and contract payments. Fourteen A is review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the director of finance and authorized payment.
I move to approve verified claims that presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Huckabee?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Liskohair?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Jagel?
Item fifteen, I was adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Let's host. We are adjourned. Thank you.